We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, January 16th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Schwantes?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmus?
Here.
Meske?
Plowman?
Here.
Vagerly?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Since in hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second?
Motion made in second at discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Next is consent items. Ms. Thompson?
On tonight's consent agenda, we have the city council minutes of January 8th, the city council amended minutes of January 3rd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities minutes of January 8th, authorization to purchase of a patrol vehicle, and to accept the police department and fire department statistics for December of 2017.
With that, I'll introduce, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda.
So move this.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent items, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a presentation and an introduction of chamber leadership from Ken Warner, the chamber president for the Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Ken Warner. I'm president of the Wilmer Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce. And we thought we'd take this opportunity with the change into a new year to do something we've never done in the past, and that is to introduce the mayor and council to the leadership of our board, so that you know if you have a question, a concern, an idea, not only can you come to me, but you can go to our board leadership as well. So I have with me tonight Pat Solhaid. She's the immediate past chair. She was the board chair last year, and she is the VP and VP of Administration, HR and Administration with Jenny O'Turkey Store. And Ross Magnuson is the chair this year for 2018, and he is the president of Heritage Bank here in Wilmer and all their other locations here in Minnesota, Iowa, and Sioux Falls. So they are part of our leadership team. We have a board of 13 people, very diverse board. We represent 600, up to 600 businesses and organizations in Kanduay County, and our main role is to promote and advocate for the area-wide business community. So hopefully, when you have issues and concerns and you want some input or feedback, support the business community, we can work together with you, and we want to work together with you. So that's all we have for tonight.
Good. Were you going to do this as well?
With your permission.
Yes, I would like to get an update on more Vision 2040s. Pat and Ross, thank you for the leadership that you've provided to our community. You guys do a nice job, and I know that one of your goals for last year and going into the future was to continue to strengthen the relationship with the Wilmer City Council. So we look forward to that happening. Ken, under your leadership, I'm sure that you will keep us appraised what's going on, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to put on my other hat right now, is I have the opportunity to serve as the chair of Vision 2040, and believe it or not, we've been around now for five years, and so we've taken this as an opportunity to take pause, step back and see where we've been, and we put together a progress report that each one of you have at your place setting there, that talks about some of the things that have been accomplished in the five years. I think we all know life is busy, and we don't take enough time to celebrate our successes and see where we've been, so we thought we would do that. And when you get, this is a 12-page report, but when you get to page seven, there is a list of all the accomplishments that we have put together. When we saw the final list, we all were very surprised. There's 43 items there, anywhere from the dog park to the movies in the park, to the destination playground, to leadership, Vision 2040, all sorts of different things that we've done. So what we want to do now is we are putting together a Vision 2040 refresh, and what we want to do is invite the community to come to a meeting on January 30th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Wilmer Conference Center. We're going to provide pizza and pop, and we have hired a facilitator, and we're going to talk in groups of six to eight people at a table, talk about where we've been, talk about where we're at, and most importantly now is to talk about where does the community want to go next. So we will actually have cards on the table, ask people to sign up, and help take us to that next level for the next five years, and hopefully the list is even longer than the 43 that we're presenting to you tonight. So it's a quick overview from Vision 2040, but it's been a great team of 27 people that serve on the steering committee. We meet once a month, and every month the room has 25 people, there are 26 people, so it's a very dedicated group that's making a difference in our community. And I should also say that Wilmer, Wilmer Lakes Area Vision 2040 is not just Wilmer, but it is all of Kanduay County, so.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Warner?
I just have one on your structure, Ken. Do you have to be a member of the chamber to be involved in Vision 2040?
You do not. Nope. That's the beauty of Vision 2040 is it's nobody's agendas but the community's agenda, and so anybody and everybody is encouraged to attend. The one stipulation that we have put on it is that to be on the steering committee, hopefully you have made some commitment financially or services in kind, because you are helping make decisions on how to spend that money that the city puts in, the county puts in, the chamber puts in, and lots of other stakeholders, so that there's an equal say by everybody. But it's not a chamber project, it is the Wilmer Lakes Area Community Project.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the work that you've done. I know that you're on the steering committee and you're the chair of this, and so thank you for all the work that Vision 2040 has done too. You know, some of the really exciting pieces are the Million Cups. You helped bring that to Wilmer. And then also the Destination Playground, you were very instrumental in making sure and providing the leadership for that, so thank you for that as well.
You know, I think one of the other things that's really neat about Vision 2040 is that when the community comes up with an idea, what we've been able to do is grab some committed citizens and get on a bus and go see what other communities have done and what they've done well, and basically ask them if we can take their idea and bring it back here and make it even a little bit better. So that's where Million Cup came from. You're going to hear some things on healthy initiatives. We went down to Mason City a couple months ago and learned about their blue zones. Again, it's all about sharing and caring and making a difference.
Exactly. And then also, you know, you're not saying anything about the Blue Cross Blue Shield piece, but it's a $2 million investment in our community, in the city of Wilmer, $2 million. And as I recall, because I think I sat on the steering committee at the time, the reason they came to Wilmer was because of the leadership and the structure behind Vision 2040.
That's right.
That was one of their guiding principles, is they needed measurable outcomes, and we had those in place. And so, you know, a lot of times people don't look at, you know, what's all happening behind the scenes, and thanks for giving us an opportunity just to get a glance at that, but more importantly, thank you for the leadership that you've provided to make that happen here in Wilmer.
Yep, and we hope the community shows up on January 30th and shares their ideas for more.
Exactly. Anybody else have any comments? I guess only the mayor has comments today.
All right.
Thank you. Now, you can stick around if you'd like, or if you'd like to take off. Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, girl's home tonight, right? Yep, so, and they're still undefeated, Ross?
They are, so are the boys.
Yep, yeah, I know the boys are. I listened to them the other night with Todd Bruggeff on the call, so that was great, so. Next, we have the open forum. Tonight, we have 13 individuals who wish to speak. As we get into items that are controversial in our community, at times, the mayor has to take some liberties, and some of those liberties require me to ask that new information be presented. And we're not trying to stifle conversation, we're not trying to limit people in being able to say anything, but what we're trying to do is make sure that our community's heard, but then at the same point, that we have the ability to function as a council and get our work done as well. I did mention at the last city council open forum that the signup sheet is here, has everybody had an opportunity to sign up this evening who wishes to speak. The other thing is, is that I'll be asking you your name, to state your name, and whether you reside within the city of Wilmer or outside of the city of Wilmer. So I used to ask you your address, I'm no longer asking you that, I'm just asking you, are you a resident of Wilmer or are you not? And the reason for that is just simply so that we know if you're, you know, if you vote within the city of Wilmer or not. We do know that Wilmer in the area is a bigger area than just Wilmer, and what happens in Wilmer affects a lot of different people. And I get calls from business owners all across the county all the time saying what's happening in Wilmer affects me. So with that, we'll go to the open forum, and first up is Earl Blum, or Bloom, I'm not sure exactly today. Your name and whether you reside in town or not, please.
My name's Earl Bloom. I don't live in Wilmer, I live just a little ways outside. I just found out that you have a three-minute limit.
Correct.
I didn't time myself, but I can tell you, as I was reviewing my notes with my wife, she walked off within a short time, so I hope, I hope you give me the courtesy of following this all the way through. I'm here for two reasons. I'm supportive of free speech and expression, also as a devil's advocate. Before I start, I have to preface with two facts. I've worked for Family Services for 16 years, helping Latinos and Hispanics and Somalis, with no prejudice on my part. I have a very distant connection with Ron Christensen. I'm not a neighbor, I don't attend his church, I haven't bought a house from him. The only connection is through his older brother. We were both on the same Wilmer High School track team years ago, when several of us got mononucleosis. It was traced to a water jug his brother shared with us. It's my connection. In this situation with Ron Christensen, I'm not here to issue adjustments. To me, it's not black or white, because I can see it two ways, but I do want to express some thoughts on the side of free speech and free expression, and as a devil's advocate. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Albrecht Haushofer. He was a German professor at the University of Berlin between 1940 and '44. He was a representative of conservative resistance in Germany during World War II. Finding himself among those concluded that the only way to prevent a disaster befalling Germany was to remove Hitler and the Nazi Party. Therefore, he joined the 1944 bomb plot and was arrested by the Gestapo following the plot's failure. In prison, he wrote what's called the Moabite sonnets, which were not discovered until after his death. He was shot by an SS commando on April 23rd. I get choked up, because that's my birthday. He was shot by an SS commando on April 23rd as Russian troops entered Berlin. One of his sonnets, titled "Schuld," or "Guilt," was on his person at the time of his execution. I'll read it. Translation: Guilt. I am guilty, but not in the way you would think. I should have earlier recognized my duty. I should have more sharply called evil, evil. I reined in my judgment too long. I did warn, but not enough and clear, and today I know what I was guilty of. Okay. So what would be the consequences of ousting Ron? What are the impressions that others might perceive? That the ultimate objective is to start another inquisition, another Salem witch trial? You want to form another Nazi brown shirt brigade or a contingent of thought police to get us all to conform to one way of thinking? How long before would you apply to Mr. Christensen? Will you begin applying?
Thank you for your comments.
How long before you apply to Mr.?
Thank you for your comments.
Will you begin applying the average citizen?
Thank you for your comments.
It's not that big a reach. There's a place in this world for people who are willing to express themselves, maybe even for leaders, and I think I can stand here and by my own free will say these words. Thank you.
We'll have the mayor state of the address, I'm not going to use any more of the open forum. It's the mayor's right to not do that. In the future, chief, we have a reason for it, and we stop the conversation, and it's the expectation, once the gavel falls, that the conversation stops. Good Indian council, staff, and citizens of Wilmer, this evening I will be presenting my fourth State of the City address, and there is much to be thankful for. When looking to our future, we also need to look back and see what we have accomplished. This year, we have many things to reflect on. The first is adding three new council members that have all served the people well, listening to what is being asked, and then working on finding solutions. With the new council body, we have been able to have three retreats that allowed us, the council, to plan for our future, a future that is filled with vision, purpose, and outcomes. At these council retreats, we established a clear vision on what is needed to move our city forward. Our priorities include addressing our aging infrastructure, parks, stormwater, and facilities. As our new council looks at planning and goal-setting, this will lead us to a productive future. Budgeting for council priorities has now been completed, and a clear vision for our priorities has been recorded and can be followed. All of these areas have been addressed in the 2018 city budget, and we are well on our way of making significant impacts in all four of these areas. As I regularly state, failing to plan is planning to fail. My top six priorities when I was running for mayor were leadership and trust, a vibrant economy, citizen engagement, things to do, housing, and lastly, responsible budgeting. I have worked diligently to make my campaign goals happen. With a council that agrees to charter path, and following that path, I am pleased to report that we, as a city, have done well on all of these priorities over the last year. Under leadership and trust, planning for our community's future has not been done for many years. Our new council values the planning process. Our goal-setting will lead us to a productive future. The 2018 budget is complete, and it supports the council's priorities. I am confident this clear vision for the next year will be followed. We continue to have healthy fund balances as we look to a strong future here in Wilmer. Under staffing, internal leadership and trust is being addressed. We have had five different city administrators over the past four years, and I feel strongly that our city administrator position will now be stable. He understands the council's strategic plan and is implementing their goals. Additional staff changes. In 2017, we had 15 new employees and added three positions within the organization, two police officers and one in public works. We had five employee retirements and eight resignations. Three of our more visible employees, three of our more visible employee changes were the hiring of Ike Holland as our city administrator in April, and hiring Sarah Anderson as our new city planner in December, and the resignation of our human resources director this past December. The following positions are currently open within the city: the resource director, engineering tech one, a building official, and a police officer position. Our employees are our best assets. Please assist us as a council in recruiting outstanding applications to fill these open positions within our community. Goal number two, our economy. Growing our local economy means building our tax base. I am pleased to report that we have had an increase in construction value of over $44 million in the last year. Part of the breakdown is as follows. Commercial and industrial construction, we had 101 permits for a total of 32, over $32 million in construction value. Under residential construction, we had 14 single-family homes for over $4 million of new construction value. And we had one apartment building that was also under construction in 2017, and that was for over $2 million. A few of our major projects this year out in our industrial park were the Magnum Trucking, less-than-full load, NACIS Technology, and the Dulles Petroleum Projects. Those businesses are all up and running at this time. A few of the other projects are improvements out at Midwest Technology Campus, Marcus Dental, Rice Hospital, West Central Steel, Rockstep out at the mall, Sweet Living, Westburg Isens, the Wilmer Surgery Center, and Lakeland Elementary School, as well as improvements to our school buildings themselves. We are addressing our housing needs by adding 48 housing units with the 15th Street Flats project that we'll be approving later today. This will allow for four homeless families to find permanent affordable housing right here in Wilmer. Hanson Apartments will also be refurbished to address safety and building concerns, allowing this property to serve our community for years to come. There are additional housing plans in the works that will be coming later this year when we receive their final plans and when they've been approved by the developer. As I often say, a strong economy drives our community, and Wilmer has a bright future. 2018 has even more projects in the works, including the recently approved Tiff Districts on First Street. We rebuilt our relationship with the Wilmer Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce. As we heard them from them tonight, they're also looking to work alongside of us to make Wilmer an even stronger community, and thank you, Ken, and your leadership. We have made it clear that Wilmer is open for business, and I will continue to ask, how can we best serve our business community? Under citizen engagement, our citizen engagement continues to grow, and much of the credit goes to the leadership at Vision 2040 and listening to our citizens. Vision 2040 has provided the roadmap, and we have worked to help build a better Wilmer. Blue Cross Blue Shield's $2 million investment would not have happened without a plan in place to measure how their investment impacts our community and the results that they're attempting to achieve. Hamline University's Community Assembly Project allows many residents to evaluate the public process and make recommendations. Citizens regularly now attend our council meetings and give their opinion on how to better our community. Yes, some of these conversations are difficult, but in the end, it makes for a stronger community. Now, we are regularly told Wilmer is doing the right thing, even in the eyes of those outside of our region. Being a welcoming community for all newcomers is something we all need to work on. I hope that we, as a city, have our doors open for those who wish to come and contribute to the public good and future success of our community. Things to do. Things to do has flourished this past year. We completed the master park plan and started funding and completing projects that were identified using our planning process. Rice and Miller Parks should be completed in 2018, and work at Robins Island continues to expand the use of this community gym. Rockin' Robins was a huge success. The event brought many residents and visitors together for an evening of music, food, and fun activities. This community event will continue to grow, bringing even more concerts to our area in the coming years. I must also brag a bit about our Destination Playground. This is a project that was made possible by local donations and community support. Imagine, if you will, 3,792 volunteers working side by side. People came together to build a playground, and in the process, we built community. Robins Island continues to be a focus. Wilmerfest is exploring the option of having the Kuzman's Light display as an added amenity. This will be an enhancement to our winter experience out at the island. Thanks to our local Rotary Club and Rotary International, this year we will have a new park sign with an inviting entrance. As the recipient of a legacy grant, we will also be adding a Four Seasons Building, including family restrooms, a boardwalk, and rental venues out at the park. Finally, in 2016, our local parks were disseminated when we removed unsafe play structures. This led to numerous community complaints. We now have a plan in place to replace and improve our neighborhood parks with safe and age-appropriate play structures to be used for years to come. Stay tuned as we build our parks to be even better than they were in the past years. So the year in review. I'd also like to point out a few of our major accomplishments for 2017 as I continue. The concept of combining Rice Hospital with ACMC was first brought to us in May of last year. We looked at how the ever-changing healthcare environment could negatively affect our local economy and access to medical services here in Wilmer. It quickly became clear that changes were needed. We worked under a very aggressive timeline. In December, Caris Health was unveiled, and a new partnership was established, making healthcare even better for our region. The Municipal Utilities Commission made the tough decision to discontinue district heat. They also made the intergovernmental transfer of funds to the city more transparent. The change clarifies customers' utility bills and helps our citizens understand that the intergovernmental transfer funds make up part of our city budget. Both of these projects will make Wilmer better in the long run and will have positive impacts long into our city's future. In 2017, the city reconvened conversations with the county regarding ownership and maintenance of the Eagle Lake sanitary sewer system. This is a project that should have been completed five or more years ago. It is now being addressed by council. We hope to complete this transfer by July of 2018. As we look to our future, we will be addressing our aging facilities. Council will be looking at our current building stock to see where improvements need to be made and how this can be done in a cost-effective manner. Addressing our city hall, community center, Civic Center ice plant, and working with the Curling Club on their new curling center are all in the works for 2018. I am proud that the council is addressing our stormwater system needs as well. Every time we have record rainfalls, community members cringe. This council has made stormwater improvements a priority by reallocating $400,000 out of the 2017 budget and committing $800,000 in the 2018 budget for stormwater improvements. We have many things in place to address, I'm sorry, we have many things on our plate to address, but we are making Wilmer a better place to live and work. Please take time to get involved in our community, because when we work together, amazing things can and do happen. May God bless each of you in the coming year, and may you enjoy all of what our area has to offer. May God continue to bless the great city of Wilmer. Thank you. Next, we have a consideration of a tax increment financing public hearing. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the action required of the council tonight is to set a public hearing for the Tax Increment Financing Housing District proposed for the 15th Street Flats project. As you'll recall, this is a project proposed for southeast Wilmer and is to consist of a four-story building with 47 apartment units in it. Last spring, the council gave preliminary approval to a 15-year tax increment financing district. The proper notifications have been filed with the taxing jurisdictions and are being published in the newspaper later this week. It's the recommendation of staff that the council keep the process moving forward by setting a public hearing for the Tax Increment Financing District for the February 20th council meeting. Because this is a new area for tax increment financing districts, it's also necessary to establish a new municipal development district, and I would likewise request that the council set the public hearing on the creation of the municipal development district for that same evening, February 20th, 2018.
Do approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve a tax increment financing public hearing for 15th Street Flats apartment project for February 20th at 7:01 PM. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign? That motion does carry. Bruce, what was the second thing we have to vote on?
District.
Council also has to establish a municipal development district as the overriding geographic area within which the tax increment district will be created. In this particular case, the municipal development district and the tax increment financing district will share boundaries.
district will share boundaries, but it is a separate step required to set that hearing as well. So I'd recommend that one be at 7:01, and the TIFF hearing be at 7:02.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second to establish a taxing district prior to establishing the tax increment financing hearing. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, city administrators' comments.
Mayor and council, I'm going to make a request tonight that we have an additional work session this month on January 29th at 5:15. And I'm going to make the second request is that we talk about two things, and that is the ice-making equipment out at the Civic Center and the proposal by the Curlers Club to build an additional facility.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that is it.
Where will the meeting be held, here?
Will be held here.
January 29th, 5:15, here at council chambers, work session. Normally, I hold my composure fairly well, I think. Tonight, I didn't do such a good job. These chambers are to be rever, are to be respected by all people in our community. And if you want to get under my skin, disrespect these chambers. I have had people come to the council and talk bad about me, say things about me, and I sit and I listen. And I'll do it for three minutes, because I can do anything for three minutes. But when I gavel the meeting, and order is not kept, folks, I lost it. Generally, I'd ask for your sincere apologies for what I did, but not tonight. These council chambers have to be respected. And I don't care what side of the issue you're on. You give your opinion, you say what's on your mind, and we'll listen to you. But please, don't respect these chambers. Councilmember Fagerley.
You've got 15 minutes for the Great School Open House.
Lakeland Elementary. Councilmember Nelson.
I'll be quick. We had Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting today, and I'm sharing the, this year's Wilmer Lakes Area 2018 Official Guide to Candy Light County. I'll also share some other things with our city administrator, some opportunities, if he would email these out to us. Dad's Belgium Waffles, it's a fundraiser for the baseball boosters this Saturday. Also, reminder to go to Spicer's Events, and a reminder to RSVP for the Vision 2040 Refresh Event. And there's also another event that's coming up, Grow Your Own. So I'll ask that they be put on our website and shared. I'll quit with that.
Thank you, councilmember Christensen.
How about those Vikings? It ain't over until it's over. Like Dick said, I play ball until there's four zeros on the score clock, or the clock. And yeah, hats off to the Vikings. What an exciting time for Minnesota, kind of payback. It's, I don't know about you, but I felt awful good after I saw him run into the end zone. So kudos to the Vikings.
Councilmember Schwantis.
I'll pass, thank you.
Councilmember Elavrodo.
We, what a blessed community that we live in. Our local high school team, the last I knew, we were undefeated in basketball, boys and girls, 13-0. That's something to get excited about. We have a phenomenal athletic program out there right now. It's very exciting if you get a chance to get out there and watch the ball. I want to echo the words that councilperson Plowman shared with us earlier, love thy neighbor. Thank you for that. That's very powerful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmas.
Thank you. I love hearing all the accomplishments that the mayor went through that happened in 2017. I think that's exciting. It's almost unbelievable when you think of how much was accomplished. I'm looking forward to 2018 and Tuesday night, January 30th, to go to the Vision 2040 to reflect back on what happened in the last five years and what we can accomplish moving forward. It's going to be a good night. Thank you.
Councilmember Plowman.
I was going to pass, but, you know, just in the last week, it's unusual, the amount of people that I ran into and that I got phone calls from and whatnot. And they hit on a major question. Why, why are you on the city council? Why on earth would you do that? Why? Why? And I love it. That's the, that's a simple answer. I love it. I love politics. I love the political process. I love, especially when we're dealing with local issues, good, bad, or otherwise, I love seeing things happen, one way or another. And I'm invigorated this, this January that we're starting, 2018. I think we're adjusting to the 2018 thing now. But the optimism at the table is a good thing, and I feel that optimism kind of reverberating. And I think as soon as it warms up, that'll help a lot, too, for people. But it's election year, and that always gets tumultuous, but also exciting at the same time. I love seeing full chairs. That's so encouraging. I have a lot of appreciation, a deep appreciation, for people that come to meetings. I don't care what, what about, or whatever, but the fact that people are willing to participate, I want to continue to encourage that, and everybody that watches and that cares to read up on what we're doing and what we're trying to do. And, you know, we get, we get a lot of, we get a lot of respect for doing a difficult job. Sometimes it goes unnoticed, but a lot of people do notice it. And, you know, I, again, I love the process, and I appreciate the opportunity to do it. And 2018 is going to be a great year for the city.
Entertained the motion, do adjourn.
Tom, a second.
Do adjourn.